Are we ready?
Dr. Nester, so you're looking very, um, are you ready?
I'm dapper.
Dapper, but you're looking very minute, very.
Okay, we're gonna start.
Very, um.
I call this meeting to order on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at five oh three P M. Roll call, please.
Chairman Nancy Thomas has been accused of absence today. Um, Dr. Little?
Present.
Trustee Lopez? Trustee Dopplemar?
Present.
Trustee Ramos? President Calhoun?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here.
Um, item two oh one, approval of closed session agenda. Can I have a motion? So moved second. There's been motion by trustee Dopplemore, second by trustee Little. Dr. Little, do we have any discussion? Dr. Little? None. Doc, uh, trustee Dopplemore, no discussions. Barbara Calhoun, no discussion. Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
Do you have a verbal souvenir?
I have.
Chairman Anna was yes vote.
Item three oh one, request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda matter. Do we have any request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda matter?
None or refused.
Item three oh two, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees. No, you did it right. I did it wrong.
No, I didn't.
You're right. Okay, we will not count in community college board of trustees, future agenda item request. Dr. Little, do you have any future agenda items request?
No.
Trustee Dopplemore, do you have any future agenda request?
No future denied.
President Calhoun, I do not have any future agenda requests. I will adjourn the closed session. We will reset the closed session. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section five four nine five zero, and following in Education Code Section seven two one two two, to discuss or take action on the following items. And that is at five oh six P M. We are in recess.
Everybody.
All right. I call this meeting to order at five oh three P M. Roll call, please.
Chairman Trustee Thomas has been accused of absence today. Dr. Will? Present. Trustee Lopez?
Present.
Trustee Dopplemar?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
President Calhoun?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here.
Item number six. Five point oh two, I always miss that. I just think I always find five point oh two. But I should. Five point oh two is the pledge of allegiance, justice for just some. I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
Will everybody please stand? You know me, Miss Steve. Well, Dr. Martin, you love to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Right hand of your heart? Ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, without individual liberty and justice for all. We're on item six. Item six is reported actions taken in closed session pursuant to government code section five four eight five seven point one. Record outline for L. Wiggins resignation. In closed session, the board took action to approve your resignation of the Director of Workforce Development and Adult Education. The roll call vote was as follows. It was four oh with trustee Sonia Lopez's absence. We are now at seven, which is the approval of open session agenda.
Dr. Curry, do we have an introduction or addition to this agenda?
No, no.
Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussions.
Trustee Ramos?
No discussions.
President Calhoun, no discussion. Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
Trustee Dopplemar with a second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So do I give a vote? Vote? Chairman Anna was yes vote.
Thank you, everybody, for that. We are now on item number eight. Item number eight. Eight point oh one, the Compton Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I am. Oh, I can't wait for this one. Oh, Dr. Curry, let's do this. Let's honor these beautiful women.
I look at you. So a couple weeks ago, we had a wonderful event on campus, which was the Jazz in the Grass, hosted by the Compton Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And so what we wanted to do on behalf of the board of trustees is to recognize the Compton Alumni Chapter by presenting with a resolution. And said, whereas the Compton Alumni Chapter remains steadfast in its commitment to the senior's residence, continue striving to elevate the community through service and sisterhood, always aiming to move Compton forward. And whereas each event, whereas events such as the Jazz in the Grass in the city of Compton are possible, thanks to the support of community partners like Compton College. Therefore, be resolved that the board of trustees essential recognition and appreciation to Compton Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where its unwavering dedication to the betterment of the Compton community. And presented this fifteenth day of October twenty twenty-four. Compton, you guys, this board of trustees, Barbara Calhoun, president, August Ramos, vice president, Juanita Dopplemore, a clerk, Sonia Lopez, member, and Dr. Sharon Little, member, and Dr. Keith Curry, president, chief director.
And my things might already stand, but it's okay, but I'm on a mound. The Delta's president, the Ned Adams. So, yes.
They don't do the picture thing as well.
Okay, yes, sure.
There's a picture.
Thank you so much, if I can address you all for just a moment. I don't really have anything prepared, but I would be remiss if I didn't say anything. Um, to Dr. Keith Curry, the vice president and the board of trustees, I am Lynette Adams Gibson, the chapter president of the Compton Alumni Chapter. And on behalf of all these beautiful ladies in red, we want to say thank you. We don't take this lightly. Um, it is really, it really touches us. One of the things I say, it's weird to be recognized as something you're supposed to be doing at a place where you're supposed to be doing it at. And so we are supposed to be here as I walk on this campus and I watch how it's transformed. It's just good to be a part of that, and we are so excited about that. I used to take summer classes here when I was working on my undergraduate degree. Uh, so I do want to thank, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Ruben James, who is always so helpful. I know they're not here right now, and I want to acknowledge these ladies by name. I have April Brown, who was our second vice president, Nina Jensen, who was our treasurer. Chair of Jazz only brands, Deanne, also co-chair of Jazz only brands, Nisha Branch, uh, Tamara Carter, Pauline Lee, and Shannon King. We thank you so much for opening up your home to us, and we're so glad that we can bring art and programming to our community. This is all. And so we're so grateful for that, and we thank you so much, and we hope that we'll be here with you. The whole thing, we could not do it without community partners like yourself. That's what I'm talking about. That's community partners, that's what I'm talking about. And partners, we are forever and ever. So guess what? You can do it one day, you already booked, you already booked it for that. Without doing that, it's all already done. So at this point in time, we are going to take pictures, but guess what? We are going to take pictures outside in the Chantilly Plaza. Well, you know, we got Julie Roman, right?
Yes.
All right. I spent those two years for free while they in high school, and then they graduate. They graduate from something college, all right. And, all right. Let me do this, if there are any board member that would like to have. No, we will start at this P M. We will start with Dr. Little.
First of all, I just would like to again begin this wonderful chapter with intimacy. I want to thank Dr. Curry and all the administration team because I support them similarly. Born and raised in Compton, grew up on this campus from gymnastics and everything. And we know how important having community be part of a community in college. And the Deltas have been an example from Walk for the Cure, from this particular activity in terms of bringing people together around ours. And so I, as a wonderful crowd, AKA. Because you really do set an example, example, I mean, everything you do seen and unseen. So thank you all so much, and we look forward to experiencing all the wonderful things you do and those things here as well. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the partnership.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Dopplemore?
Yes, thank you again, it is such a pleasure, and I always look forward to, out of all the Jazz in the Grass events, I just look forward to coming and being part of Jazz in the Grass here at Compton College. It is, it is, it is amazing, and it's a wonderful opportunity to open up and be in partnership, and then open up and have our community and our surrounding communities come to a place where they can feel free to have a good time.
Yes.
And, and a good time and fellowship, so I really appreciate that. And again, thank you guys so very much.
Thank you.
I'm very honored to have you here on campus as representing.
Thank you, thank you so much. I just want to say thank you so much. I have enjoyed, okay, I do the V I P. I'm sorry, but I like sitting on the brass too, because I'm just on the brass. And it's okay, so whatever ticket you want to purchase those tickets. You don't need the tip though. A little more, I'll pay for underneath the tip. Gaykeeper and Sora Deanne, where they make sure, they'll make sure they're on a needed tip. Okay, and if it's higher price, I don't care, I'm a label. But this event was so beautiful. Oh, and let me tell you what I like.
What you like?
You're gonna like them, Sam. Didn't you, oh, Julie was big. It's a lot of meat. And then the cookies. The cookies that you're having, you're just laying the cookies up there. And then I was being real nice, because the table wasn't full, and I wanted another cookie. But I knew I couldn't have more. So I was nice to the other people, they finally came. One lady didn't want the cookie, so I was there. So, and the vendors that you had.
Yes.
All those vendors were good. I bought lipstick. When you twist it, it lights up, and it got the mirror on it. Uh-huh, I went on there, I bought the lady with the cup with the, you know, with the vibrations on. And then the food in the back, it was good. Yes. Um, the fish, they, they, they were good.
Yeah.
They were good. So you have just enough there for all of us to partake in, even though people brought their own food.
Yes.
They still went back there and they did the vendors.
Exactly.
So thank you all, I love it. I'll send you. All right, everybody. We are now at item number nine.
Oh.
Is the request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Pursuant to board calls, eight, two, three, five, zero. Vote for trustees. This is the, oh, remember the, 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 the agenda, non-agenda. Person has a thirty million kind of, that's cool, maybe there, I'll see if we can. So item number nine oh two, Compton. Ms. Sylvia, please call the names of the persons that are, we have to speak. Never ask you on a non-agenda item, Compton College enrollment?
First, I would like to begin, the party relation, the person, on the book in the Compton College, five years of, you know, reports to your community. Twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-three. First time student, like in Compton College, nearly thirty-six. I assume students earn up to twelve college credits, new construction. I have four scholarships available. I've read that they go to the other market, participate in programs, and do a lot. There's a growing passion, strength, low, increasing enrollment, low retention rate, low graduating rate. My grandchildren and others, a difference on campus, to determine if it's fine. Any potential to change the plan will be somewhat delayed. Thirty-five million dollar bond, February twenty-four, two five hundred and fifty. We just have a hundred and fifty-one million to go on, you know, our budget here. That is, that is big, well, not to mention, the administration wants to add another two hundred million. There is a stamp increase in the year. I'd like to, I don't know, pretty much, you know. July, I'd like to thank Compton one, that's in one for, within eight hundred and fifty thousand of Compton College, location of technology building, private. Hopefully, this money will go to, at least seventy-five. Where students receive vocational training, preparing the employees, way jobs, and the community. And that the oversight community, they will ensure that this money is provided. Right? One percent of the, of the, of the, that all, that's right. And thank you, thank you, that we press into place. Uh, Nicka Black, non of the item, I haven't been partnering with you.
Okay, Katie, Nancy, Dr. Curry, everyone here? Um, I'm here to put on record, uh, Dr. Curry did, um, correspond with the Holyfield family in the earlier part of the month of September, as far as, um, the, only be of our Holyfield Library is concerned, with a quote for, um, signage, uh, replacement practice. Uh, what I'd like to request is another meeting with Dr. Curry, so that we can get, um, an outline of how the scholarship portion of this program is going to work. Um, I'd like to restate, I said it on record before, but we would like to give, in addition to fixing the name, three students scholarship money for their education. And we'd like to present this in the month of March, in honor of International Women's History Month. Um, we also, I need, this is my first time partnering with a college, so I want it to be as big as possible. Um, we were in talks with some people who want to partner with us, who are within the city of Compton, are really want this to be as community-based as possible. Again, I thank the boards, you guys, in two years, if you, listening, you come up here, thank you very much. I want to thank Dr. Curry for really putting his personal touch and rectifying the situation and not making it a really big news story. I want the first time that anybody in the media hears about the only, be our Holyfield Library, we give a, how come the college want to give the students a month? So thanks, guys, very much. I apologize, I can't stay till the entire meeting. Mr. Holyfield wants to be here, but he got another meeting, he will be here next time. Thank you all very, very much. I'm leaving.
Thank you.
Ms. Sylvia, do we have a little? Yes. Philip Park, non of the item, present academic reading course.
I'm in the consulting department for a, um, I'm a student here at Compton College. I'm a student here at Compton College, and I present an academic course that I took. But first, Ms. Nicole Smith, from the job placement specialist, building owner. I went to the miracle job, she probably go to a, uh, job there. To, you know, you know, I went to doctors. Hey, I was a job there, and I found out about the red face paint, and I took this course and I read the course. So I asked the red workers, like, so certification, I was more than, and another, uh, course. Next one is supervisor and project, uh, manager, which makes eight thousand plus here. So I, I do have some information about this, uh, course that I took in Allen, uh, Nata. And I mentioned it to a couple of other, uh, fact, of, of, of this, here at the school. They told me. Red workers, red workers, and also, uh, supervisor slash project manager. And, uh, the government's given a lot of funds, and nine building bonds, I think, in the United States, or California, and California also, the governor, uh, Newt, who passed, anyway, in Los Angeles County. Los Angeles County, they have to have all the residential housing inspected, and non, non-incorporated, not, you know, unincorporated cities, they have to be inspected, coming up soon. In October, they're just not letting students, the, the property owners.
We're at nine oh one, we, no, nine oh two, Compton Community College District of Trustees, future agenda items. Trustees, do we have any future agenda items? Dr. Little?
None of this time, again.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No.
Trustee Ramos? President Calhoun? No. I have ten board of trustees minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, did I go too fast? Okay. Then we don't want minutes of the September tenth, twenty twenty-four board of trustees meeting. Can I have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Ramos. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little? Trustee Lopez? Trustee Dopplemore? No. Trustee Ramos? President Calhoun? No. A discussion, seeing no discussion, please place your online vote. Okay, item eleven is report from representative and employee organization. Associated Student Government Report. All right. Academic Center Report, Sean Moore.
He's not over here this evening.
C C C F E certified employees report, Dr. David Chavez.
For a board?
Oh, good evening.
I'm not Dr. David Chavez, I can't reach the order, fall there, but better.
There is a minutes here.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. My name is Carlos Monry, I'm the vice president of this. So, this is my first time doing this, so I'm not sure how it all goes technically, or what y'all know. I won't get into the, uh, articles that are in Sunshine, probably just about, contract negotiation. Um, I'm assuming y'all know, and I mean, quote, section eleven, so I won't get into that. But today, I wanted to talk to you all specifically about the compensation article. A couple of points, from academic year nineteen twenty to academic year twenty twenty-four. Uh, the college has seen an increase of fifteen percent in the portion. Salary changes in that same exact time have increased by one point five seven percent. One point five seven percent. Of the eleven districts in L.A. County, the other districts have seen increases in the back salary between fifteen to thirty-three percent. Again, from the, obviously, one point five six percent. Uh, as far as spending and reserves go, the unrestricted reserve grew by seventy-two percent from academic year eighteen nineteen to academic year twenty-three, twenty-four. So that is a rise from twelve point six million all the way to twenty-one point seven. Spending on academic salaries stayed relatively flat, again, uh, going from thirty-seven point six million to thirteen point eight. The percentage of the total budget allocated to academic salaries declined from thirty-six percent in academic year eighteen nineteen to thirty-three percent in academic year twenty-two, or twenty-three, twenty-four. Cost of living adjustments, otherwise known as COLA, uh, fact they've not received. Several COLA increases from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the cumulative missed COLA from academic year eighteen nineteen to academic year twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-five point eight three percent. Despite the state having this to the district to cover these adjustments. To give you all a little bit of context, again, in the, from the eleven districts that are in L.A. County, we are ranked eleventh for salaries. So that last, uh, what the union is proposing would take back these salaries to the middle. We'd be about average for the eleven districts, uh, with the, uh, district is offering on the table, would take us to tenth place. They jumped from eleven to ten. We are aware of how the board values the administration. We are asking that the board show that same valuation to its faculty. We're asking you all to direct the district in being fair and equitable, if it helps to compensate. Again, if y'all, uh, what it would be goals, has been to win the Aspen Award at Compton College, and I do believe we can reach them. There, the last Aspen Award winner, one shared, was in California, Central Valley College. Uh, it would be interesting to go ultimately to their salary compensation, or what I say. We're giving time, and we hope that we, I mean, we together, oh, I can, it goes inside of an animal. Oh, I can, it goes inside of an animal, it's a, I'll be a little slow.
Well, thank you. CCCFE Classified and Forty is before. Now, we are down to I have no report. Kevin, I don't twelve is Compton College, new presentation. Twelve oh one is Compton College students equity and achievement. Dr. Curry, can you please introduce?
Still lying, actually, that's okay, I let Dr. get it.
Yeah, well, this is a factor of basic needs and success. We're trying to participate in the student equity and achievement program. You're right, update, this is part of our yearly updates from the Board of Trustees. As based to what we do with student equity and achievement, the more so also that I appreciate any response.
I get you, members of the board, I'm really gonna get out of Dr. Curry. Today, uh we won't be talking about basic needs, I'm sorry, Dr. Curry. What we will be discussing is our progress in our student equity plan. That was initiated in twenty twenty-one, and we will be sunsetting that this year, or I'm sorry, next year. And be going on to our new student equity and achievement plan, so we're gonna talk about this, the data. And where we're at with that in our plan. And then, but I will discuss some of our two programs that are coming up in the student equity office that will be under SC as well. So I just wanna update about this program. We are, because it's, I know it's already is a concern for the board. We are currently at seventy students, just so last year around this time, we were at thirty. So we are now at seventy, going strong. Uh we still meet every Thursday from twelve-thirty to one-thirty. Uh we are always looking for people to come present to talk to the students, or if you know anybody that will do that, or they could be a great resource. We are always looking for people to give new information to our students. Uh we still do our monthly pack meetings with the Harvard parole board. Every Thursday is been a great improvement for us. Uh that's when the parole board comes out, brings all the parolees, newer parolees to our school. And they're able to get resources from the community, us, uh even other schools are trying to jump in and come in, uh contribute to students. But it's been a great uh opportunity for us, they walk, after that meeting, they walk right over to our office. And we have our, this meeting is during the same time, so they would get the meeting, get a sense of community and a role right there with us, it's been great. Uh I also want to just talk about, uh as you know, we lost our beloved Dr. Lewis last year. And we're continuing his legacy, we're hoping to establish a scholarship of his name for the students who are still learning. Uh but uh he would be proud to know we're around. New for maybe twenty twenty-five, so hip funding. So in twenty nineteen, uh the Chancellor's Office launched the California Community College Homeless and Housing Security Program. Basically a pilot to get um to help the housing, our students, as you know, we're in a housing crisis in California. Uh Compton College, uh it's been one of the colleges that have recently selected for this round two funding. And I know that the cabinet had just approved everything, so we're gonna go forward with that as we go on our student equity office. Uh next, uh next slide. Uh beginning January twenty twenty-five, and that's the main award is about a hundred and twenty K per year. This is all to support our students with the housing. We have some ideas uh for that, um as far as immediate housing that some of our students need, so we can get the services. And we're uh going forward with that, and so this is something new that's gonna be coming in Compton, that'll be coming out in the SC. I'm sorry, I said man. Next slide. Uh now, the updates on our student equity plan, as you know, they're all centered around our, I assume the Chancellor's Office, our student metrics. Uh access, completion, persistence, transfer, and completion. So now we're just gonna look at what our goal, where we, where we going through the years to wrap. Uh of course, the student equity plan is right there, you can click on that, and we'd like to be visiting. It's also online as well, um under student equity, so it's all there for us. Next slide, uh our defined metrics are there, successful enrollment, like I said earlier, this is a good overall definition, let me guess. So uh our target outcomes, as you know, for each metric, we targeted a population. That we saw that the data may have been lacking or that we wanted to improve. So our target population males of color. Uh along that, you see some of the things that we have done in twenty twenty from twenty twenty-one to now. Uh increase the sense of belonging among males of color, targeting academic personal supports, one for student persistent completion. You'll hear Dr. Banks come up later and talk about his work with that. Um in twenty twenty-one, we were at eighteen hundred, but now we are in twenty four sixty, so as you can see, we are doing well in that metric. We have not met our goal, but we're on it. Next slide. Uh persistence, so turn, turn about fifteen percent. As you can see, done a great job with that as well, forty-five percent twenty twenty-one, uh between twenty twenty-four, we're at seventy-one. Uh this is all. Ratings for us is on campus, whatever, in fact, it's a professional staff, and I'm picking, it's been success in the next. Our transfer level matings, we still need some improvement here as well. Uh would like to point out that um this is usually within the first year, with sometimes difficult questions. Um we have seen this has gone down, but it's also might have to do with the numbers and starts that have been improved a little bit. And we're still looking for uh growth in this area. That's all. Our transfer. Uh so our target population again was males of color, my students. So we have improved, we're still waiting on our male of color trans students as the um. The notes right there, the state hasn't really updated on that. Uh this, uh next one, uh completion. So completion, we're kind of made state here. Uh we still need a, an obvious, obvious information provided, we have to kind of leave that and find out what is going on. So right now, we're just reporting out what our numbers. And then just going forward, uh what we're planning to do, we keep doing. Uh ensure all students are given that school education plans and assigned a tablet. Keep developing cultural responsive pedagogy along with Dr. Banks, Dr. Blanche, and six, seven. Continue pressure for rest development, uh continue to follow what's. See it, there is about maybe ten different steps per metric, that would be using. And continue engagement through our Dr. Banks programs. Next slide, so that will be all, uh if you, also, Dr. Martin, Dr. Delaby. Dr. Martin Williams is here to answer any questions, they still have that in this. Uh if you have some additional questions about the data, that will include my presentation.
I'm sure it answers now.
I was answering Laurie Williams, I just didn't put doctor on it.
Trustee, do we have any questions? Dr. Little?
First of all, thank you for a great report, um starting with the fifth student and looking at the numbers. And so great that the increase has gone up to seventy students and. Going down to the data, especially around the five metric indicators. So it, I just wanna, first of all, the males of color are completed with the fifth and, and where is this aggregated? For the women who participate, or is it only for the men?
It's only for the most, but that was considered our target population.
Okay, so the seventy reflect only male student.
Correct.
Okay, but we do have female students, right, who participate with it?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I misunderstood, yes, no, this is combined, this is, this is students male and female.
Of the seven?
Yes.
Okay, and so the numbers here. Reflect their percentages, do we have that disaggregated, women, men?
Uh I, uh the seventy, I can get that to you.
Okay, that would be really, really great to see if there are. Specialized uh interventions that may. Need to be focused on. And so then going to the equity metrics, and we look at the twenty-four sixty, that's total for males of color in twenty-three twenty-four. The head count, correct?
You're.
I'm on page.
Nine? Yes.
Okay.
For males of color.
Here it.
Compton, the whole school.
Right, and so the persistence rate was seventy-one percent in twenty-three twenty-four, correct? Correct, okay. But the completion rate for English and math for African American was five percent and it's better than ten percent, so.
And just click right in the first year, our transfer level math and English.
So is there any documentation of what courses the students are taking that would. Explain what courses are counting for persistence at such a high rate? But they low completion in these core courses, which are necessary to transfer from. My colleague.
Laurie, do we have, could we have this idea, but we can't, I just wanna make sure, then the question is that.
The pers- for the persistence rates, if the student is in, of course, in fall, it can be English, it can be math, it can be, you know. Um and if they return there in spring. For the transfer level math and English, it's if, for a brand new student, so this is the first time they send it to college after I is. In that first year, if they're completing both transfer level English, which is English one-on-one, and then transfer level math.
Absolutely.
If that, within the same year, they don't necessarily have to be open at all in their brain.
Because actually, what I'm trying to get to is if their educational plan that shows, so when I went to school the first time early on, I had a lot of units. But not a lot of transfer, I was taking a lot of classes. More of the ones that I liked, obviously, it's important for students to connect to, and that's a way in which many students kind of find with their most important student. But it is also important, when we start talking about completion rates and not languishing five, six, seven years. So I'm just trying to see if there's somewhere it's being documented, someone's tracking what courses they're taking that count for persistence. But yet, they may not be getting the necessary required files for transfer.
So, well, with respect to transfer level math and English?
That and any other required courses to transfer.
So are.
Maybe a third.
I, I think this is more of a policy question, regards to how we monitor students' equity requirements. And how we start to look at course taking parable computers. So with our dashboard, we have been facing a, it was designated by race at the course level. Which you ask about course taking parable students, and to find out, oh, for example, of the twenty units of oral taste. How many of those units were transfer level courses that they took for their success retention? And I think that we build our dashboard, we probably could ask that question, but that's something that we, we have not looked back at regards to course taking better. But I think that's something we can go back to, and have a conversation with them, and also with student success community. Regardless how we look at, and also with the counseling department as well. You know, we absolutely ask any questions, right? And so the question would be, based on student's plan, one, if they followed it, that's number one. Two, if they followed it, what was their success in those transfer level courses? And so how do we pull out that type of data? So I think it's a bigger question to ask, but I think it's random target, and start looking at the vision for success twenty thirty, of how our students are fully based on course taking better. Why this significant? Because you see a number two, it's a procedure basically to those things before. If those three continue to see basically support, then they might just continue to stay in classes, but they might not, we look at transfer level classes complete, right? So at, in a day, we'll assess this completely. And so I think that's something to look at each year, but also look at how we monitor the data. So we'll take this back to the student success community to have a conversation about that, and also that pathways, compared to how we can look at that. And then also what else, what way in our system that this data can be pulled out, right? Because it could be cumbersome, if we were to say we want to do the data, and it might be like somebody asked, and somebody's doing, I don't know. But I think that to a degree, that might be the way to do it, but I don't know how we do that within the nervous system. That's a suggestion, but we can look into that.
Yeah, I definitely don't want it to be cumbersome, what I'm thinking is, on, on both ends of that, Dr. Curry. One, you know, with all of the touch points with students, whether it be at the counseling level. Um wherever the educational plan is both made and monitored. That students aren't informed, and it needs giving a heads up to say, hey. You're taking twelve units this semester, two of which count, which were you completing, and it may be okay. But just know next semester, the next semester, you don't need to keep having that imbalance. And then also, I think it can lose all of the great deposits that are happening if we're not capturing that. If their educational plan kind of went left, where the system positively redirected, and we can go back longitudinally and, and show the impact. My final question is, under the student equity plan updating view, it talks about the educational plans, but it also talks about Dr. Banks. And Dr. Blanche, time to developing cultural response, pedagogy, and supplemental construction, which goes back to the experience in the classroom. And I'm just wondering how our faculty and academic senate partnering around accountability about the experience within the classroom, ensuring. Because we know no two learners are the same, and that the backpack of faculty must be diverse. In the ways in which disciplinary knowledge is disseminated and has a direct correlation, if not causation, to people persisting, to completing. They have to be accountable, but there is definitely a symbiotic relationship. So I'm just wondering, in this process, where do faculty partners that you openly and consistently?
There is, I know Dr. Banks might talk about that in his presentations after me.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, okay, we can wait, we can wait, I'll be happy to wait.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just feel bad, no question, thank you.
Yes, um again, thank you for the presentation, my question is, uh with the number of, of students that are participating, um I think it was. We have a large number overall, right, African American, um, um, male students and students of color. Um. My question is, do you possibly have that information broken down by age? And I'm specifically thinking, what comes to mind, is we have um some students that are adult learners. And when you're talking about um a transfer plan, did we? What if that, what if that student is not at a point where they want their transfer, or we pass them? I mean, I know the goal is to continue on, but for your traditional students, but when you have your non-traditional students, their path is more than different. That's one time it has been, because we, we, you know, if we don't look at that, if we look at, if we look at that age.
Yeah, if you have that day available, it will be part of your, to give set standards.
Is that the, is there the asterisk that always comes here, because I think that asset by all the time?
About the age, no, we don't say anybody, that's it. But are you in this report? The only ask person that you're part of, I think, was about giving transfer. So the seventy percent is because the, so the way that transfer is counted for the state is that. We may have a student that we know was here in spring, and then transferred to a more university in the fall. But the way the state attributes that to Compton, they will look at all of the enrollment for that, you will get all of the colleges in the state. And first, they did that student complete twelve units at that college. And then there's a formula where they say, student, if you're here, if you're at Cerritos, they will decide which of us gets the credit for transferring a student. So that's the file that has been finalized.
Okay, so. Um, do you know who gets, do you know who gets too awarded, do you know how that is calculated out, is it the first, or where the, where the units were completed?
So if we, if we uh award a student a degree or certificate, of course, we, you know, receive, you know, the acknowledging and credit for that. But just for the transferring, so if a student then transfers to the Woods Hills or UC Irvine, the state ultimately determines. If Compton transferred that student for another student in college.
And how does that determine?
They have their own, they have their own methodology that starts with looking at a student completed twelve units at that college. The last gate of enrollments at between the two districts, which is, it's a lot, which is why that file didn't even record.
Okay, okay, so going back to um the adult learners, right? So, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is because if those are the factors. If you're performing greater, if you're actually performing greater than what the, than what your data is showing. I'm wondering if, if you pull out, say, like your student learners, right? Your, your adult learners, and you look at some other, if you look at some other, if you break down the overall population of the student. Then maybe your, the numbers or the data will let, will. Then maybe your, the numbers or the data will let, will reflect and show that you have a greater trend of leading your numbers, right? So, so there's transferring, the, um, the numbers, it's, um, it's all, it's all of the numbers, right? Even the, the transfer level English and math, so what if I'm not, so what if I'm in those first two years? And I'm not gonna be taking any of those classes because I'm, I'm here for the first time and I'm just trying to figure it out.
So are you talking about?
Students overall.
Like, not taking the ones that are like transfer, our lifelong learners.
A lifelong learner, because I'm, because I'm not gonna meet your, I'm not gonna meet your first year metrics. So if you pull those numbers out, then I'm not gonna be dragging down your numbers.
Right, so for our, for our internal district data, we can.
We cannot.
We can, we can, for what is looked at at the state level, they do not include those non-transfer paths. But it is something that, that we try to improve with part of our institution's examiners. But it, but yeah, as a part of the, the student making a genuine program, they do not.
Okay, so now, that, okay, so, so I'm getting, I'm working down, so I don't ask that next, next year too. So now with that, um, so now with that, with that, cause everything was continue, continue, continue. I'm gonna continue, 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 so what is, what are, what is the plan? To help those students transfer level, transfer level, with the math and so on and so forth? What is the plan to help those students meet those goals and outcomes? And what can you guys do differently to ensure that happens?
Well, I can say at least from, at least with respect to transfer level math and English. Um, a lot of the conversations that we've done with, and I got a faculty committee, where we are looking separately at what strategy we can take. Have it college to encourage students to enroll. And, you know, the one-on-one in their first year and the transfer level math in their first year. Uh, we'd be gonna engage with the faculty, it's looking at basic harm withdrawal surveys. Um, where students are reporting, you know, if they're accessing. Support services like tutoring, the student success center. Um, there may be some other conversations that, you know, we're going around Kansas that we're not, that involve in I E, but. We are having those conversations, so what we can do differently to encourage students to go enroll, and then how are we becoming aware? The student is, you know, at risk of dropping out of the course, how are we following up? Um, what is that faculty engagement fee, so a lot of those things are happening in other committees to support the work of.
And, and I think also, let's see, got the work, as we start creating our twenty twenty-five plan. We're gonna have to go back and dissect the twenty twenty-four plan, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, what worked, what didn't work. And then, uh, come back as a candidate to see what can we do to increase that with some.
And then if that could be, when, when that starts, so when it gives, it's brought on, so we can see the comparison, right? Or when those, when those, um, when those, um, best practices were implemented, to see the, you know, to see the year over year. You know, the improvement, I mean, I would like to see that as well, so, so those things that you guys are putting in place. So you can go back and measure and see like what worked and what didn't work. Okay, and that's all I have, other than that, that's.
Thank you for the presentation.
I just have one question. You were talking about speakers.
Okay, so you're talking about this, so, uh, we try to just bring. Any kind of enrichment services for our students when we meet every month, so they don't hear us talking. Or they're not hearing the same information, so things like record expansion, uh, child support. And things that like students that are coming home and they have all this stuff they have to do, and things change over time. You know, things of that nature, we want to come in and teach students.
Thank you, but a very useful point, thank you so much. Well, point on to, um, the college of the lab and males of colors success initiative, Dr. Curry.
Yeah, I'd like to shoot Dr. Antonio Banks, who's director of Black Indian of Color Initiative, Success Initiative, I'd like to touch.
All right, uh, good evening, Steve Ford, Dr. Curry, Captain College Community. Uh, I'm here to present on just progress update of Black and Moser College Success Initiative. Uh, tonight, I'll just, uh, give you a little bit of context as to, uh, why the initiative was established. And the online developments of this, uh, the progress of it. Give you an idea about the events that we've done, so encourage through engagement on campus. Uh, talk a little bit about external representation, uh, of the, the initiative. I am then share some student testimonials, say, talk to the work, uh, next slide please. So, uh, essentially this initiative was, uh, founded on an idea of. What would now be, uh, seen as black serving institutions. And there were a couple of tenants, and this was established by, uh, Dr. Curry. That they wanted to see done in an institution that were, uh, serving black students. Uh, some of those things we proved in unapologetic and certain students, uh, not serving a finite number of students. Uh, making sure that all employees, faculty, staff, and class of five are all in on student app. To see black students, uh, really taking a deep dive into the data to look at, uh. How we can improve the, the outcome for students' strategies. Uh, intentionally building community, budget-related decisions. Uh, ensuring that students have a better value proposition or understanding why higher education attainment is critical. Uh, and again, uh, deserving unapologetic, unapologetic, next slide please. So this is just some data that was shared with us by the institutional effective office, thank you, Maury. Uh, and this essentially contextualizes why something like this is needed. As you'll see very quickly, I won't go through each one, but what you'll see is that. A large portion of our students are still over that three hundred percent threshold in terms of attaining their educational objective, right? Uh, we have a smaller number of students who, uh, finish within that three hundred percent timeline, and we have. Even fewer, essentially zero, who complete their certificate or their degree within a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent of the time of the normal. Uh, completion time, so there is undoubtedly more work to be done, next slide please. So, the designation of the B S I is, is coming down the pipeline, but the infrastructure of this initiative. Has already laid the foundation of blueprint for this. Um, we assert that the responsibility for the success of black students as well as most students of color. Uh, is the responsibility of both the institution as well as the students. Uh, so we strive to be a hub for increased success of the population by way of student engagement. Uh, programmaticish, uh, components and utilizing a guided pathway structure. Um, coinciding responsibilities of our initiative include campus-wide consultation, professional development. Uh, focused on black students and those of color, uh, and fostering an increasing of belonging for those populations, next slide please. Uh, so some of the practices, uh, that we worked on, we were embedded in the persistence and retention plan for next year. Uh, so essentially looking at ways that we can invite adult learners, uh, to participate in programs and events. And did that to a monthly or five-monthly digest. Uh, this year, the plan of action is to do that on a weekly basis, so that people are getting constant updates about what we're doing. Uh, that mailing list is initially, um, generated by way of people who attend our programs. Uh, and then that continues to, to add on as more people come to our programs. Uh, we try to ensure that all of our programs are on the, uh, online calendar of events as well as canvas. Uh, and we've increased our outreach effort by way of our student assistance. In addition to that, we seek to continue normalizing help-seeking behaviors for these populations, uh. Through, uh, our efforts and in, uh, partnership with Associated Student Government. Uh, so we've collaborated with A S G on workshops that normalize help-seeking behaviors such as knowing your academic resources. Sharpening your toolkit, your place and how to use it. In addition, we look to strategically work with A S G and additional partners to continue to, uh. Provide opportunities for adults to use. Additionally, uh, we look at, uh, how we can impact guided pathways, a couple of the North Stars, so successful enrollment. Uh, fall to spring persistence and travel, uh, transfer level English and math. Uh, so some of the ways that we look to do that is by way of our leadership academies that students are, uh, enrolled in. Uh, and that helps instill some of those basic principles about what student leadership looks like, how to be inclusive. How to be, uh, culturally responsive, and how to access resources. Uh, we saw great, uh, success with those programs, and the hope is that they become ambassadors of. Captain College of our programs, so their brains, so the respect of the union about the initiative, so that they can get plugged into the initiative as well. In addition to that, looking at providing our tutors in student success center with culturally relevant pedagogy, we did begin that last year. Uh, we seek to expand that this year by providing some, uh, professional developments with subject matter experts who have had. Uh, track records of success with serving black students as well as most students of color. Next slide please. Some of our points of success, um, so far have been our strong partnerships with, uh, folks like the Basic Needs and Student Equity. As well as the biz program, that might be attributed to our proximal location, we're right across the hall, they neighbors. Uh, we have onboard reciprocal support for in with student life. Uh, Dr. Harrison serves as my supervisor, so he keeps us plugged in to what's going on with A S G as well as Mr. Board. Uh, uplifting professional development with intentional sessions on in the color. Uh, as well as supporting and coordinating the Black and African American Student Success Summit. Um, and partnering with professional development on the leadership academies. Uh, doing some programming collaboration with the E O P S and Cal Works throughout last academic year. And then conversations in tandem with institutional effectiveness and our achieving the dream coaches. Uh, to look at ways that we can engage faculty, um, around data. So that we can more successfully support black men and our black students and men of color. Next slide please. Uh, some of the work that I know we need to do within our init- initiative is, uh, do stronger integration consideration. Uh, of the practices, uh, through our guided pathways, divisions, so that's some work that we need to do. Uh, improving our relationship with effectiveness from business office, they've been great. Uh, in terms of supporting us, but there's still some work to be done on my end and learning the administrative policies and things like that. Uh, and then a stronger and intentional development of relationships with our S R C. Uh, as we have a lot of older black commercial populations, but we haven't made those intentional collaborations, but we'll see to do that throughout this year. Uh, this is just a. Uh, overview of what last year looked like, we did a lot of programming, provided conference opportunities for students, leadership. Uh, academy opportunities, cultural celebrations, as well as professional developments. Next slide please. Uh, so this far, so this year, we're really just having the engagement program is done through a collaboration of. Uh, my student assistants, myself, some folks from outside, some of our campus partners. Uh, but they have a pretty good student engagement, um, if you're ever here on a Tuesday or Thursday. Um, we do a lot of programs in this room, our two eleven, please feel free to stop by. Next slide please. We also support again, uh, conference attendance for our students, so we just had some folks come back from Nanti. Uh, we're gearing up for the Moja Conference as well as the Young Men of Color Conference that was in place in the fall. Next slide please. Then our leadership academies are actually underway, we got our second session of this in part series, and this is an incentivized program that's supported by. Uh, the mentor initiative, the S D A, as well as, uh, the Black World Grant, the Build Foundation. Uh, so we're able to incentivize participation in this for students. Uh, this year, we have just about fifty-five students that are participating in that. Just to give you an idea, last year, ninety-four percent of the students felt that they gained a stronger connection to faculty and faculty members that they didn't know before. They had a stronger connection with a new student that they weren't familiar with prior, um, and felt more confident in their skills and abilities as a student. Next slide please. We'll also be launching our internship program in November, Bruh, our, uh, Building Resilience Through Understanding and Humanization. It'll be focused on self-awareness, of up seeing social responsibility. And all students who participate will have a priority for, for with this to be young and of color. Uh, the main conference and Motha conferences this semester. Next slide please. And then looking ahead against the spring, we'll be hosting our Black or African American, uh, Student Success Summit on Friday, April fourth. Uh, this year will be called Community Without Community Parish. Uh, previously, we've done online versions of this, but we're looking to do an on-campus, one-day. Uh, professional development that's focused on professionals as well as students. Uh, a student track, we bring in established educational leaders. Uh, who have been settled in advancing practice, our curriculum and policy. Uh, we have a black student success to host these sessions. Again, we'll have a professional track and a student-focused track for the day. Next slide please. And then again, we look forward to our, uh, crowning moment for the year, the third annual Black Grad Celebration slated for Friday, May thirtieth. Uh, twenty twenty-five, and from six to eight thirty, in the Captain College Gymnasium. Uh, year over year, we've seen increased participation, uh, from our graduates. Uh, and that was possible through support both from A S C and A S G, uh, as they've been able to allow. Uh, us to extend invitations to more, uh, family and community members. Uh, and again, that's just a crowning moment of honoring students' experiences, doing aspirationalism of their respective communities. Next slide please. Uh, also, uh, Captain College has a very strong hand in, uh, coordinating the Black Student Success Week. And, uh, Dr. Curry is the, uh, who can call yourself. The chair and co-founder, there you go. Uh, but we also have a lot of support from, uh, folks in our campus, including myself and Dr. Hudson. Uh, who helped support the practitioner panel, as well as ongoing logistics for the program. And we also, uh, host watch parties here, so if you wanna engage with students, we usually have to turn out of students, and if you wanna engage with them. We'll be right here during that time, slide please. Uh, and I think this is a big part that we wanna focus on as well, is the external representation of what we're doing here, the foundation, and the blueprint that we're laying here. Um, so you can see, uh, past efforts of, uh, representing the initiative. And then since our last four presentation, which was in March, uh, we've still been busy representing the conferences. Uh, on panels across the state, uh, we just recently had an op-ed in the L A Central talking about the importance of black student success. Um, helping with representation at the twenty twenty-four African diaspora educational summit. Um, and just lots of different ways that we try to represent, let people know a lot of work is being done at your College. And, uh, I'll just get one student testimonial, uh, one student said, my experience at B M C S has been wonderful. I've had the opportunity to meet many incredible individuals through this group. Uh, Dr. Banks has fostered a supportive community for Black and Brown students. Having previously attended other community colleges without an organization like B M C S. And the resources it offers was challenging and affecting my academic performance. Uh, thanks to B M C S and the information and resources provided workshops, I've been more engaged in my school and motivated to maintain my presence. Uh, that was fine, two, that's it, so, ready?
Does these, do we have any questions, Doc?
Very quickly, thank you so much for the one point. Um, just kind of combining the first. Presentation, how many students, is it the same twenty-four sixty that comprise this initiative? By target population?
Yes, the same target population in terms of men of color. Um, I don't have the exact number for black students that is listed, uh, target as well. But the programs and things that we offer are targets or full populations.
Okay, if we could, you know, you know, get an update on the specific number of black male students. And black female students, because I'm just wondering, for the NADI conference, were those black male identified students?
Yeah, it was black, it was a conference focused on.
So, so you guys also provide leadership or professional development, and you share resources with black, you know, students?
Yeah, so I think that was, that's always been a point of confusion about the, the initiative is focused on black students in totality. Uh, so that's inclusive, all students are identified as black, but also men of color. So when I first got here, I was under that perception that it was focused on black and women of color, but it focuses on black students.
Is black students who we aggregate and men of color or males of color?
Correct.
In addition to.
Correct.
So that I wanted to clarify, so of the twenty-four sixty on slide four please. Um, first of all, you were referencing the three hundred percent back to the one fifty, what does that equate to in time? Is that three years, two years, five years, or more than three hundred percent?
So if you look at, uh, an associate's degree, people engaging takes about two years, so more than three hundred percent would be. Over six years.
Okay, and so that the average, and then the number of degrees, whether it be nine degrees under the den. Or fifty-four degrees or fifty-seven certificates with more than. Is that a total amount of whatever that was segregated, black students total, or is that just for males of color?
That's for black students.
Totally?
Yes.
Okay, well, you'll give us that number.
Yes.
Okay, my final question, thank you so much. Um, on page ten, under thirty-three and thirty-four. Um on page ten, numbers thirty three and thirty four, about the professional development. Who was the target demographic and what was the number? Like, like who in terms of statehood group, what was the number?
So the statehood groups were uh faculty declassified and management, this was coordinated. It was the professional development department, so it was sent out across the campus to all the countries.
And we have numbers of participation.
I do not have the complete, I can't, this is only the professional development director. Uh but I guess I was supporting your job there also, yeah.
And we provide that data as a faculty, where in regards to professional development, the number of faculty classified, professional men, men who participated that first.
The optional participants, correct?
It's optional, but but also, yeah, faculty at least to the professional development, uh flex credit. And so it means you buy that as part of the flex uh obligation, and so we provide the data for all the the different breakers.
So, I trust you know Ben?
Yes, hello, I'm Dr. Banks, I'm just, again, thinking out loud, I'm going back to the whole. Uh all of our plans, the transfer level English and math, making sure everybody's on target, we're still talking about the same. Um uh population of students. Is there a way, and I'm just thinking, I'll sign the box here. Is there a way, I'm sorry, I'll ask it like this, so with some of the programming and some of the mentoring that's offered. Is there um say uh folks that come, say from like the county states and the U Cs. The four years that also talk in terms of like what this, you know, like the plan for like the transferring to the four year. Uh some of the um careers and jobs that are available, and I'm thinking. To get those thoughts going for the students, right? Um for them to think about, okay, so now for this particular profession. I need to do X, Y, and Z subject wise, that's what I'm trying to get at, is there?
So thus far from our initiative, the the main thing that I can link up that would be done. Uh was actually this year, we went on slide eleven, we did something called Transfer Talks. Um and we got somebody who uh who did jump for the Transfer Center. Um just shared kind of, you know, uh why across the requirements for the different systems, so the C H U system, the U C system. Uh and the H P partnership system, our partnership guarantee that we have uh in the chancellor's office. Uh so not in depth in terms of what uh programs or what course issue you need to take in order to, you know, go into certain careers.
Right.
One thing I can talk about, and although I don't have any uh quantitative data to practice, but. I know in my center, we do, I do try to encourage students to consider taking those uh classes early. Uh off off and not, not on record, but they'll say, you know, they're kind of saving those courses for the last because in their mind, it had a little. You know, kind of fear about taking those courses. Uh and so that's why I think the work and partnership with student success is critical because we need to. Uh again, work with the students, so that's how I would say now of the plan, but it's will see. Uh those those opportunities for professional development will also be open to faculty. Uh so that they can learn more about cultural relevant ways to uh engage the students uh with those respective topics. So uh we've been in conversations with. Student Success Partnering, thank you. Um as well as uh looking at some of the. The data to figure out how we can sensitively address our, you know, go after those conversations with faculty in those respective disciplines.
Yes, thank you for that, and then my last question, so with with all of these. Um are there, is there like um feedback, surveys, information that you're getting from the students to kind of see how you can. Uh meet some of their needs, you know, maybe tailor, customize some of the programs, right, and then?
Absolutely, so we keep an internal uh comprehensive uh survey that I do at the end of the semester that goes out to any student that attended events. Just to have them talk about their satisfaction with the program. There's anything that we can do a bit differently, and so. Uh our best this year is uh somewhat based on that feedback, um and we do those at the end of the semester, so if you ever want to take a look at that data, I can provide that data.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Trustee Ramos.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, I have no questions for you. Item thirteen, the Cassette Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Cassette Agenda? It was moved by Ramos, second by Trustee Lopez. Do we have any, Dr. Curry, are there any revisions to the Cassette Agenda?
No revision.
Do we have any items to discuss? Doctor Lewis. I'm pushing one. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dr. Moore.
Um thirteen oh, uh thirteen oh five, six. Oh, and thirteen twenty one.
Trustee Ramos. President Calhoun. So I just have a question. Are you uh, are you, are, are you asking a question or you need them to be told? Okay, you just have a question. Okay, okay. Trustee Dr. Moore, mine is just clarification, it's not. Okay, you're not pulling anything, Dr. Curry. Okay, yeah, if you want me to, yeah. I can do it all together, thank you. So Dr. Curry, can you please answer whatever comment they have? Because, Doctor Lewis.
Yeah, I just wanted to indicate a bit notes on here that um I'm seeking to serve on the Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. Which I did before, however, A S G can also assign you to where there is need as I currently sit on the finance audit committee, so I just wanted it to be transparent. That they may appoint you to one of these committees even though you're seeking to serve, so it doesn't seem like there's a risk there, that's all.
Trustee Dr. Moore, thirteen oh five.
And just to, mine is newer, like just clarification, but then we do that now, is it a special time now? Okay, so I'm sorry, uh Trustee Little, I just wanted to ask.
No, 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 we're thirteen oh five.
I'm, I, I said thirteen oh one too.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't have it down, I had thirteen oh five, thirteen oh six, and thirteen twenty one.
Can I, can I ask? For thirteen oh one?
Why not?
Just to clarify.
Oh, are you, wait, wait, are you directing the question to Doctor Lewis or to Dr. Curry?
To Doctor Little.
To Doctor Little, okay.
Can I ask, Dr. So are you, with that, are you gonna, you gonna be on both now, are you gonna remain on the finance audit?
My request as last year is public policy, however, because of the need, I was placed on finance audit each year. This latest pain, people start over, so you're, you're not gonna be appointed to different committees.
So you can only sit on one committee?
Will serve on one, and I'm requesting public policy, I'm just saying, if it shows up afterwards that I'm on finance audit, to just clarify that that would be their appointment. If accepted.
So that's, it's the practice, got it, okay. Understood, I want to get some questions. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thirteen oh five. Um so thirteen oh five, because, because this kind of ties into the whole. Is there a mapping? Um because I, I see, uh I'm specifically thinking for the math and English courses. Is there um a map? Doctor Curry, that. And I know that these are newly approved, right, courses, is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a new book course, there was a critical process, went to that critical committee, and then went to the other two.
So can the, is it, is it possible that somehow these could be mapped? Go ahead, you know my question.
The English classes that are on this agenda, you asked them if they need a class?
In the map.
Okay, so the English classes are in activation. These classes are being pulled out of the catalog, okay, because they are pre-transfer level, they sense those classes. That under eighty seventeen oh five, they are no longer able to offer.
Okay, so these are like, the, these would be before A V.
Maybe before eighty seven oh five.
Before eighty seven oh five, these would be like those um. Those classes that we would take to kind of get up to.
Give them transfer level.
Yes, 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 I want to say remedial, but someone is it? Okay, so now the map, so go to the map, so the map classes.
The map, uh the map sixteen C is a core class for our map one sixty five Business Calculus class. Because there is no longer a course prerequisite on that one sixty five under our eighty seventeen oh five. Um and so they are building in a support class that's suited to take this concurrently with Business Calculus to get additional support in the class. And I'll be specifically for this, for Business Calculus, we already have support classes for statistics, we have support classes. Um we have one for trigonometry, which has not been successfully operated because um. He only, but one, one student. Okay, and the other map one hundred supervised tutoring is a non-credit class so that we can. Uh students who go to the Student Success Center for tutoring, they get registered into this non-credit, which is a non-rated class. And it's a way for us to um report their hours to the state chancellor's office. And we are able to collect full-time equivalent students based on the hours they go in. In, we already have an English one hundred class, and we started offering them into the summer, this past summer, and collecting.
So, so what's your question? That's about mapping originally, and so now. But you, but your original started was about mapping of courses, are you, is, are you just wanting the description of what the mapping was? Is your, I'm just trying to explain, is it to the mapping?
So now, understanding that the, the English is off the table, because those are being pulled. So now for the, for the math classes, is there a way to kind of, you know, map? In terms of, so this is where I start, and like my, this is, I want to say we have. A prerequisite or what was it?
Are you asking the other chart that shows the sequence?
The sequences.
Yeah.
Is it, so would this be added to that now, right, because these are new coming online?
These are, that map sixteen Z class is just a support tacked on, so if you're, the maps are specific to majors. So if you're a business major and you need to take Business Calculus, map one sixty five, this isn't an option, you can't take the class by itself. It has to be taken in combination with the actual class, it's a support piece. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And the map one hundred is not in a sequence because it's strictly a non-credit class, again, to, to support. But for students who go to the Student Success Center for tutoring.
Okay, understood.
But our math classes and our English classes are on the program maps for each program that we study. For each student program.
Uh no, put the next one, thirteen oh six. The thirteen oh six, um these records, these are also, um, because I know they're broken down into different classifications. These are um, these are student records as well, correct? These, it's. So is there a, just to make sure. That once they are, is there a way that the students are um. Informed, thank you, notified. That these are still available, are no longer available?
No, it's not, if you look at the tax policy, it talks about the document, the tax letter, and the last sentence says that all registered classified class one have been scanned and are ready, are ready to be in the system.
And so, yeah. And then if you don't have to get a copy, neither?
We gotta scan, you can put it out, like, so it's, we're scanning documents, and this is in compliance with our policy, and also in terms of all the regulations.
Just asking, to make sure. Okay, that's it, thirteen twenty one. Um thirteen twenty one. Is this the um. Is this? The. Is this the uh? Okay. But were we supposed to use that, what we, what are we supposed to be using that for something else?
Yeah, so we will be using it, or, so we brought in uh B R concepts, clean up that area so that it can be used in the future. And this is a question reported, brought forward for the last couple of years, and we have now got to the meeting of this.
And, and so soon.
I can revise the report when that will be completed, but I met with the facilities department about a month and a half, a month ago. And this was brought up in a meeting in regards to work with this firm, to be able to clean up the dirt and cut the grass, and so they can certainly start to work on. So the faculty divided work for it.
All right, okay, next round. That's what I have, that's it.
You don't have one more?
No.
Okay, that was it.
Good. That was me. Okay, go with that. Transfer, please. Please place your online vote.
It's, it's updated by. Action items, yes. Action items, item fourteen, Academic Affairs. The Los Angeles Sub Regional Profiles Project Summary Report and the Gateway City Sub Regional Profile. Can I get a motion?
Okay, second.
Move by, Dr. Lewis, second by. Trustee Dr. Moore, do we have any discussion, Dr. Lewis?
Not discussion.
Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Dr. Moore, no discussion. Trustee Ramos. President Calhoun, uh please place your online vote.
Oh, I. So.
Moving on to fourteen point zero two Administrative Services. Uh Compton College District Resolution Number Ten, dash fifteen, dash twenty four, eight, dash budget transfers and optimizations for. Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three to Twenty Twenty Four, is there a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by Trustee Lopez, is there any discussion, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez.
None.
Trustee Dr. Moore.
No discussion.
Moving on to fourteen point zero three Administrative Services. Uh Compton C C D Resolution Number Ten, dash fifteen, dash twenty four, eight, budget transfer to non-entirement for people here twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five, is there a motion?
Oh. Okay.
It's been moved by Dr. Little. It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by Trustee Dr. Moore. Is there any discussion, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
A little bit.
Attention.
Trustee Dr. Moore.
No discussion.
And we have the vote.
Thank you, Harry.
Moving on to fourteen point zero four, adminis- administrative service of contracts. Over a hundred and forty thousand five hundred, first class, can I have a motion?
Don't worry. Okay.
It's been moved by Trustee. Dr. Little, and seconded by Trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Dr.
No discussion.
Um, please place your online vote.
The motion, Harry.
Fourteen point zero five, facilities, planning and development contracts over a hundred and fifty. Fourteen thousand five hundred, change order number one, M L C, instructors incorporated. Can I have a motion?
Um, second.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Dr. Moore. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez, no discussion, Trustee Dr. Moore.
No discussion.
Please place your online vote.
The motion, Harry.
That concludes item fourteen, moving on to item fifteen, discussion and action, uh, Dr. Curry.
Yeah, item number fifteen point zero one is an update on full-time students for conference college, uh, right now, we're up by eleven percent. Uh, compared to last year at this time. I would continue, we have our next eight-week session starting this Saturday, October nineteenth. But you also have the data requested by the board, regards to class mobility and the bill rates, you have a bit of marketing and advertising. And also obviously, including eighteen years in the place. A lot of work is being done in regards to enrollment, and we anticipate the run to continue to increase over the next semester. Do you want to move to this?
Yes.
Item fifteen point zero two is our yearly, yearly trustee area, core card, since we teach in trustee areas. Regards to, uh, for your, for your data, or to have your information with distinct ones. Who are enrolled at Conference College, uh, you can get the information regarding some of the students, the percentage of that student population. Were completely trapped in that within the semath, and you also get the gender, demographics, age, and also ethnicity. You also have the enrollment percentage, with the full-time versus part-time, and also the persistence as well. And there's other information that, of, 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 that means, which include the basic support, and the sense for taking advantage of this on support. And I'll say, let's say thank you to Amari Williams, who is our, our dean of institution of breakfast, for his staff and.
All the people.
Wait. I do have a quick comment.
Dr. Little.
Yeah, um, first of all, I just wanted to thank Dr. Curry and the entire team for our overall, and then our trustee area, um. Reports. I think it's really important that the community track. Not only each of individual trustee districts, but also look at the collective, because. I think it really is important that we are community representatives to the thoughtful, um, I'm really proud for five. And I think it's a trend across all of our districts. Um, that the number of students we're attending has increased. I mean, obviously, it's not quite back to the level pre-COVID. But when you look over the past four years, you see, um, a marked increase. And I think it's also very important, thank you, uh, I think the student is gone, who was sharing about. The vocational programs that we have this kind of itemization. Uh, industries and then corresponding salaries. I think the more that we can share, because as we've all stated. Um, one of the great benefits of community colleges is that we accept all students. From various walks of life, many four-year institutions, they are accepting students with the sole goal of graduating. And again, that's the beauty of a community college, because not everyone is necessarily seeking to not only get a degree, but to transfer. But they have opportunity for educational engagement and learning. And as was stated earlier, we have to reflect all of those numbers, and so sometimes the numbers get conflated or confused. Because not everybody is seeking to graduate, not everybody is a quote-unquote traditional student. And so I think these report cards help us to understand and to hold us accountable to say where we can continue. To improve or, or target, and that's why I really was appreciative of. The student today who was sharing about those resources, because many people may pursue a six-figure job. In lead project management, but who may not be pursuing, um, a, a A A or seeking a transfer to a four-year, and so I just think. That these kind of reports help our broader community understand the complexity, but also the gift of community colleges. Thank you so much. That's it.
Are there any other comments? Dr. Curry, item seventeen.
Seventeen has a board trustee policies, uh, board trustee policy measure raise for review. Trustee Calhoun had a question today in regards to board policy twenty seventeen, regarding COVID ethics with standard practice. Regards to board members depending on previous presentation events. Uh, and that's in the board when they look into further, if you'd like to know. Uh, but we do have updates on the board policy and measure regulations, the ones that are, what's our?
Seventeen oh three. You can have my consent. And that we just cleared that.
Do they have any, do they want to move forward with that review, see if they, they want to add that? Or look into it.
What is it?
The board policy twenty seventeen, trustee Calhoun asked aloud the board policy, essentially language as relates to attendance at board meetings and house meetings.
Any work with that?
So, is it open for discussion? Yeah, it's open for discussion. Oh, so, and, and what? Well, this was just my thought.
Uh huh.
Uh, we ran on this.
Uh huh.
We know our requirements and the things that, uh, is expected on the board. Uh, things that should be expected of the board. Uh. Attending board meetings. Uh, trying our best to be on time. Staying for the entire board meeting. Participating in some of the functions that are going on at the college. That's all, and it doesn't have to be many. I mean, we have a whole year to do things, at least trying to participate. In one or two or three of the things that are happening at the college, during the year, from the January to, uh, December. So I was asking, could that be added? Dr. Curry said he had to bring it up before the board. So I just added it and tried to get some input from the board. They can either agree and say it should be added, or no, they don't think it should be added, and that's fine with me.
I'm interested to know if there's any other college that has similar language, or the league. Have any subjective language, I'm not necessarily in favor, but. Given that it's up for discussion, really interested to know if there's any recommendation. Um, out there that any other college can do something similar, because once it's policy, that. Becomes a mandate versus an optional thing, so it's now a prescriptive. Um, item, and so I'm curious if we're gonna go towards that, really would love some guidance on what other regions have that.
I know.
Before we make like a decision, like just like what the policy would look like, so that we know what we would essentially vote on.
I know that I, uh, I know that I've talked to a lot of board members when I, when we go to the conferences and everything. And I hear, uh, from the perspective of other board members, how they attend. Different functions at their college. I never have asked them, is it a policy or whatever? A lot of them just say they ran and they knew what the responsibility would be, and. It doesn't have to be a policy, but they did talk about that they knew what their responsibility was, and they attend as many functions as they can. And they say that they, uh, when it comes to the board meetings. Uh, no matter what is going on, they attend the board meetings unless there is an emergency in their family, and they say they stay, uh. The board meetings, and things like that. And then they talked about some board members, um. Have bad attendance, some board members have excellent attendance, and. Some colleges have sanctioned board members, some colleges have not. And so it's just different policies that they might have or they don't have, and I just. Decided to add it down there, and the board isn't okay, but it does fine with me. I just wanted to add.
Is there a perception that there is a concern that requires a necessitate of policy? That again, is there a concern or perception that you still necessitates or requires this added policy?
There will always be a concern, but, uh. When you have, uh, as board members, as board members. Uh, we do know our functions, and it just would be good to see other board members attend different functions that are happening at the college. And not always because somebody might be retired. I think that they should show up at everything, or they don't show up at everything, and. We all have lives, we all have busy schedules. And I know everybody doesn't expect there. Somebody to show up at every function, but it'd be nice to see board members, other board members attending functions on the college. Or at the college.
Pardon me, I, I would, if I could jump in here, I would like to say, um. In terms of like, um, morale. The, I would say the, um. The presence. I see, I can see where it's a presence of board members, um, being more visible. With boost morale helps with, um, even like with some of the events and stuff that will happen on, um, on campus, like with the community. I can see where that can be a plus in terms of, um, exposure also, in our respective, um, districts or out in the community. So for me, I would, um, I would like to pursue it or look in, look into it further. And once again, it doesn't have to be a policy, it could be part of the board's goals. It, it doesn't have to be a policy, it could be added to the board's goals. Reminder for this, that I think from a professionalism perspective, um, to your point, people run to certain. Service objectives for a lot of people, and I think if you go district by district. Um, I'm not certain there's a calendar event that is itemized by districts, and so there may be quite a few things that you may assume you're a district that I'll never see in vice versa. Secondarily, I think if we were to do that, then we might have a prioritization, it sounds like things would be weighted, so if you went, for example. The black graduation or to the nursing pen or that, uh, suggested to be, um, more of a priority of usability and counting more, where if you jump. Um, seven eleven hours for the black students successfully, because that was more accessible. So I just think it could be a slippery slope. I think we should all hold ourselves accountable. And we should, you know, practice professionalism, but we should be ever so careful, um, to, to not be, uh. Logic-based and to have arbitrary standards of participation and impact when there may not be equivalent. Just remember that this was suggested. I'm just responding to it as we have a little time, that was.
So, could, can I have an organization?
You sure you can?
I, I, you know, as Trustee Lopez, I did a, a slight conclusion today on searches on board policy. As I follow up on your question, I can look into that and also look at the C T O C policy as well. But then also you have to cross-reference the policy with board compensation and also board responsibilities policy as well. Do they do cross this request across other policies as well? And I can bring this back with more information for the board to discuss, for what I found a lot of other colleges, whether to also bring those two policies as well, so the board has all the information to have discussion.
That would be fantastic, Dr. Curry, thank you. And Dr. Curry, can you please also include, for example, leadership as a community college trustee, a part of that representation? Because I think that should count and be reflected in terms of professionalism as well, if we're gonna look at a category in breadth. Uh, what counts as being an effective trustee.
Absolutely, the big, the effective trustee leadership, when you go to the conferences, right? And you take all those courses and then you fill out this form, and then when you fill out that form, you send it to the triple C team. And the triple C team, you get all the marks and everything, the triple C team will honor you with a certificate, and your name is on a big cardboard. The date and then the year that you did that, and then they also have a recertification, and you could recertify effective trustee leadership. And your name goes on a big board again with your picture, as to the date and the year that you completed it. That's a very good suggestion, Dr. Moore.
Uh huh. And I'm, I'm so happy to say that I've checked list all of that and have never submitted my effective trustee. So if they were looking merely at my name was up on the board, I would be considered a failure, although I have, I think maybe four times the amount, so that's what I'm saying. We have to just be ever so careful how we.
I would not consider you a fan.
No, I'm saying by that metric, because I had filled it out, so I'm just saying whatever process needs to be put in place, that's why I mentioned it. That there could be some ways in which we can account for it, because at the end of the day, I personally feel we're here for a reason. And. There's a lot of metrics we need to be looking at, like I said, our graduation, our persistence, how much time we go. And, and, and encourage people to come to this campus where no one will ever see. Um, when I was on campus yesterday and speaking with Dr. Curry and seeing people that I literally saw on the streets and encouraging them to come because of the resources. To me, that's also, I think, a metric that may never be counted. I know you talked to countless people. And they come here, and I may not know you were the first, you know what I'm saying? But that matters, because we may not ever be able to quantify it, so I would hate to make that be one of the categories of if you're effective or anything. So, well, thank you, Dr. Curry, for your feedback.
And, uh, raises on agenda for next month.
Thank you.
So that includes a board, I didn't talk about the board policy, but they're here for information first for you, and also there's a relation for more policies that are included. The other item that I want to just kind of go to information item.
You can.
Just want to highlight a couple things from information item, one is eighteen point zero one, is an updated board trustee's goal, or approved last month. I do have the email communication out to, um, draft it for Dr. Benjamin, so that, uh, Trustee Roberts and also, uh, Trustee. Uh, Dr. Moore can meet with her in regards to the revision of, of the vision statement, and I would also be bringing our consultant, working on the twenty thirty five plan, to be involved in that conversation. You also have an update eighteen point oh seven, on the R W economy state, uh, for hoping the board to be able to adapt, also update on foundations. And where we're at with the foundation that we're moving forward. And then you also have item number eighteen point one three, which has a, oh, oh, that person's terms. Oh, our open, other post-employee benefits, uh, like, um, trust account, uh, funding and withdrawal schedule. As planned for this year, we will be withdrawing from the schedule to be able to pay the payers' bills for retiring health benefits, and that will be on the, uh, weekly process that they do this week. Uh, and that concludes the information section for the.
Moving down to nineteen?
Nineteen, oh, the board had.
Oh, I'm sorry, do anybody have any questions about any of eighteen?
Nineteen is the future, do, do you board, that's one zero one? That's a question you want to have you to do that.
Does anybody have one? Count, on nineteen oh one, counter community college issue board of trustee, future agenda items request? Dr. Little, no, thank you. Trustee Lopez, no, Trustee Dr. Moore, no, please, you can. Trustee Roberts, and done for you.
Alright, so we have the, next month, we have a due enrollment and special resource center presentation. We also have a being enrollment management, uh, less than report cards will be done next month, and also a bill on campus police and an update on message. Those are written updates, and now you want to go to more reports?
Yes, and please.
Uh, model report, item that I, that I want to mention again, that the second eight-week session starts this Saturday, October nineteenth. And I also want to mention that this Saturday, October nineteenth, from ten to four o'clock P M, we have the St. John's Mental Health Summit. And I also want to mention that this Saturday, October nineteenth, from ten to four o'clock P M, we have the St. John's Mental Health Summit that's being held in the Allied Health Building. Okay, come back for.
Dr. Lu? Um, just thank you, Dr. Curry, and the administration, and everyone's reports tonight. Um, I think, again, just reiterating the importance of community engagement, the example that Dr. Curry just stated, for example, the St. John's. Um, but also just all of the other efforts to keep the community centered, as we started with the, uh, develops the beginning. I know for a few years, several of us were hoping to have more on-campus engagement, whether it has been the Community Day, you know, the car show, the jab on the grass, um, and other efforts. I just think that that is what a community college is about in addition to the excellent education. So, um, thank you very much. Now, Dr. Little, I'm sure you participate in the upcoming election.
That's not, no, they don't know. Trustee Doppelmore?
Yes, I would just like to, um, um, say that this, uh, past few weeks, I've had the, uh, the, um, opportunity to just walk and, um, speak to community members um, along with some of our volunteers, as well as, um, speaking to the community members, answer our questions um, about our upcoming, uh, bond. I had the opportunity to attend, I think it was, uh, the event. Fundraise, was it fundraiser event, or event? A bond event? What is that? Mom, the mom? I can't talk about that?
No.
Okay, we'll scratch the whole one. Oh, sorry. Okay, what do you want? Oh. Uh, I didn't hear that part. I'm sorry. Um. Yeah, just remind everyone to, to, um, to register for our mid-session, uh, class that will be starting on, on Saturday. And that's it, that's gone, I'm missing.
Trustee Ron. All right, first of all, um, thank you, everybody. Uh, I'm sorry to give it back to Dr. Curry. I went to a, um, N H S building for a area, uh, for the council person. While I was there, they had a, had booths outside, and this person from Amino Compton after school, uh, I was talking to her, and their school is located on San Pedro. And when I told her the area that I represent, which is, uh, from Mona Boulevard to Maine, from Rosecrans to Imperial, their school is on San Pedro. And they were sending their students for dual enrollment to Southwest. And when I told her what her area was, she said, well, how come we're not at Compton College? And I said, I don't know why you're not at Compton College. So we had a great laugh about that, but she gave me her information, and I'm passing it on to Dr. Curry, because she said San Pedro Compton College, and I gave her the brochure about everything that we offer, that, uh, Deborah Askew had in her name. I gave her that brochure, and she said, you guys do all this? And I said, yes, we do all that and more. So hopefully, um, she'll be getting in contact with Dr. Curry, we can reach out to them. I attended, um, the triple C T, uh, meeting, I'm on the board for the triple C T, and, um, they have a student trustee advisory. Her name is Zara, Z A R A A I N G E. And, uh, they have, uh, they're looking for students, student trustees to be on the board with her. So, I'm gonna give you her email, and you can put it in there, and then you can inform the student trustee, uh, she can email the young lady. And then we had a presentation by Dr. Bull about unconscious bias. And the reason they had that, by being on the board, I was harassed. I was harassed like unmercifully, and I kept telling the person, stop it, stop it, stop it. And this person refused. So, we had our last meeting prior to this, I brought it up. I named the person, because that person was right there on the Zoom. I named the person, and I informed them that this is my last one, and either the triple C T board do something about it, or I'll be seeking a lawyer and get compensation. And I was very serious about it, and they knew I was. And so they had a training. Uh, when we was there, Dr. Bull did it, and the person was there, and that person was quiet as a rat pissing on cotton. Sorry, this is very cold. And, uh, the person knew, everybody on the board knew the purpose of the training by Dr. Bull. With unconscious bias, and, oh, the person, uh, that was doing this was Caucasian. And every step of the way, they just kept poking. And they almost poked me too far, till I turned around and walked away. I said, no, walk away. And, uh, so it was very good, uh, training that Dr. Bull gave. And, uh, I'm glad that he did it. I don't know if the person learned the lesson or not. But, uh, that person is no longer gonna run for their college board. They decided not to do another term, because I was really gonna go after winning the term. And I'm not playing, I was gonna take up everything he got for the ride, he had eaten at Kitchen Center. So he did us a favor. And, um, they also talked about, uh, they talked about our duties, our fiduciary duties, by being on the triple C T board. Uh, I gave Dr. Curry some information about one of the men, remember I was studying the topic, what it was about? And Iluret's, yes, our, and it was very good. So I gave all that information to Dr. Curry to get some more information. But I enjoy being on the triple C T board, because you get, everybody from different colleges are there, and they have a lot of great input on what they have to say, and they bring it to the table. And so, uh, that was a, a very good talk. And so I enjoyed it. I'm still on the board. And I want to thank everybody, and if anybody is ever harassed, you can always go to H R. I will say that. And thank you, board members, for this meeting, and thank you for the staff and the community that showed up. And remember, it takes a village. And on that, good night. Our next meeting, I'm sorry. Our next regular scheduled board meeting will be November the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Close session begins at five, open session begins at six P M. And we are adjourned. We will be at eight, is it bingo four?
No, pardon.
Yes, eight oh four P M. Thank you once again, board members.